Good morning. We'll call the City Council meeting for February 26, 2020 to order. This time, please join us for an invocation and a pledge. Who's joining the invocation?
I will.
Okay.
Heavenly Father, thank you for all the blessings of this day. We thank you for this wonderful community called Tyler. We thank you for all of the citizens in it. We thank you for all the beauty. We're coming into springtime. We thank you for this weather. We thank you for all the wonderful rain that continues to bring life to this wonderful part of Texas. We ask your guidance and wisdom on this selected body so that we make the best decisions for our constituents within this community. And we always want to do our very best for your service also, too. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have the minutes from January 8, 2020 meeting.
Good afternoon.
Motion by Warren, a second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. This time, we will come down for some service awards. We have a long list of distinguished police officers today, one fireman and one person from solid waste. So at this time, for 20 years of service, Kelly Atkinson, Fire Captain 2. Thank you. Come right in here, turn around, and let's get a picture. Thank you. Appreciate your service. 20 years of service, Matt Liegaber.
Can you do James? He got lots of awards.
Yes, yes, I know. Thank you, Matt. Craig Williams, Police Department, 20 years. Thank you. Mike Okini, 25 years with the Police Department. Okay. Mike Saxon, Police Department, 25 years. Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
Donald?
That's my first.
Oh, we didn't know that. I saw Donald. I'm like, that's not his. Thank you. And Police Officer, we're so proud that he is here today, Clint Garner. James McGraw, 25 years. Are we supposed to squeeze? Yeah, yeah, come on. I gotta stand up. Brad Langford, 25 years with the Police Department. Thank you. Okay, your first name's Allen.
It is.
Thanks, appreciate it. Kelly Reeves, 25 years with the Police Department. And Robert Dominguez with solid waste, 30 years. Thank you very much. And look, I've said this for 10 years, and I want to say it one last time. The City of Tyler does so well with law enforcement in this community because of longevity of all these officers that stay with this department. They provide great maturity and safety for all citizens. They become so familiar with what's going on in the community that it is a true benefit to have these men and women in the Police Department stay this long. So it's been, these folks provide great service to us. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Our first item is a presentation. The decennial census will be kicked off, as you know, April 1 of this year to count all people in the United States. The count is being facilitated by the U.S. Census Bureau with support from local governments like the City of Tyler, school districts, and community leaders. The results of the process will have major implications for Tyler and Smith County and Texas for the next 10 years. A study conducted by the George Washington University of 16 large federal grant programs estimates that Texas would lose just under $1,600 for each person not counted. Local agencies benefit by using the census results to identify growth trends to aid in planning for future infrastructure needs such as roads, utilities, and police and fire stations. Tyler was selected to house the area census office to serve as a regional hub for coordinating census efforts in East Texas. And now, I'd like to introduce Andy Moore, who will be providing an update on the work performed by the United States Census Bureau related to the 2020 census.
Thank you all so much for allowing me to come speak today. My name is Andy Moore, and I am the U.S. Census Representative Partnership Specialist for Smith County, Wood County, and Raines County. In mainstream titles, that means I'm public relations and marketing. My job is to make sure that I come into the community and make sure that, number one, that everyone is educated about what the census actually is and what it does for our community. The second is, I re-educate. There was a lot of rhetoric that came out of Washington, D.C. over the last six months that has really confused the public, and I want to make sure that everyone understands that the census is here to help, to provide information, and, most importantly, provide funds. And those funds are $675 billion that will be distributed annually among the United States based on population count. And so, the more participation in the census, the more accurate the count, and the more the population is in line with what we actually have in the City of Tyler, for example. And so, last, in the three major points, is a partnership that I reach out to government leaders, organizational leaders such as nonprofits, healthcare, school districts, and also businesses to make sure that we can work together as a community and make sure that we're reaching either constituents, your client list, patients that come through the hospital, people of the community that are using the resources that the census provides, and making sure that we're counting everyone once, only once, and in the right place. And when I say "in the right place," I'm referring to the students of UT Tyler, TJC, Texas College, those students that are using the resources of Smith County, for example. We want to make sure that they're counted here, especially the ones that don't live on campus, the ones that commute in but they're still living in the area. We want to make sure that they're counted here. We also want to make sure that the ones that they're counted here that live in off-campus housing are counted because sometimes they think they have to be counted where their parents live. That's not true. We want to make sure that they're counted here. As those colleges and universities have grown over the years, especially in the last 10 years, we will need to make sure that they're counted here. So the question is, how far over 100,000 will we go? Well, it's up to the public to decide that. It's up to us to see how we can be involved. And so, there's a tool that everyone can go on. You can go onto census.gov, you go into the search engine, ROAM is called Rome. I wanted to pull it up, but it was blocked this morning. I'm sorry about that. And it'll show the self-response rates that were low. And so, if we're looking at the Gentry Corridor all the way to Beckham, where it meets Gentry, north, south, and then another pocket off of Trup Highway in Paluxi, those are what we call the low self-response areas. So, over the next couple of months, until we get ramped up, we're going to make sure that we're focusing on where to have events where people can self-respond. And so, what does the census look like? Self-response will start around March 12 through 15. April 1 will be Census Day, so you will see lots of publicity about the census and that being Census Day, so lots of events will take place. We will do self-response and enumeration all the way up until July 31. So there's four ways that you can respond: online, via the phone, mail, and then, last but not least, the all-time favorite, enumeration. Now, if you live on a county road or a route, you will not have anything mailed to you. You will not have it mailed to you. So we need to make sure that those folks have the opportunity to do self-response via the phone, unless they would love to have someone come to their residence, then someone will come enumerate them, but they will not receive a paper form in the mail this time. So I want to make that very clear. The last item that I would like to talk about is that we do have a local area census office. We're wanting to fill that up with jobs. We're wanting to hire enumerators. So we want to make sure that everyone is going and applying that 2020 census/jobs for those opportunities. The pay is very good. It starts about $19 an hour in this area, and there's lots of opportunity. It's as flexible as you need it to be. So as little as, we hired two ladies that are working four hours a week. As much is up to full-time. So as much as you can do, as little as you can do. We want to make sure we hire everyone that we can in this area because we want to make sure that we get an accurate count this time and make sure that we get the most funds available for Tyler, Texas especially. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate you and all the service that you provide. Thank you very much.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
So how far, to what extent do y'all reach out? I mean, do you go to the homeless? Do you go to the incarcerated? I mean...
Yes, sir. So I'm actively involved with an effort that goes and meets with the homeless population advocates, and so we have reached out to them, and they are making sure that we know where those folks are at. So in the, we have to reach out to people to partner with them to make sure that we understand where to go to actually count the homeless population and make sure they're counted, to make it easier for people who are more migrant, that maybe come into the area from other places around Smith County. We're going to host an event at the Tyler Public Library to make sure people can self-respond there, use their computer lab. So those are the outside-the-box ideas that I'm working with lots of partners in the area to make sure that we are counting everyone.
What about the incarcerated?
So there will be a separate effort for that. That's what they call group quarters. So we will actually go to the prisons and make sure that they're counted separately in a separate count. Yes, sir.
Sir, I ask if you could reach out to me if I could meet with you afterwards because I do work with the homeless every single week under the bridge here in Tyler.
Okay, absolutely.
One way, Pastor John Walton.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
For $19 an hour, I might just apply. That's a very good bet. And so now, we'll go to P2. We have Elizabeth Story and Chris Miller from the NET RMA to do a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
City Council, appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'll be very brief, and then I'm going to turn it over to our expert here. But we wanted to come to you all and give you an update on what we call the Eastern Loop, I guess, Segment 6, the expansion of Toll 49. As you know, we have completed a feasibility study that was completed in November, and now we have identified three routes that will now enter the environmental impact stage. And so that's a very intensive process, and so we wanted to reach out to you all. We know that you all have probably had folks that have talked to you about, you know, the proposed routes and where things are, and so this is a good opportunity to give you an update, answer any questions that you may have. So I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth Story. Elizabeth Story is one of our engineering consultants with Atkins, and she is handling the public outreach on this, and so she's very familiar with all the folks that have had questions or have concerns, and she works with them very well and tries to get as much information as she can to them so that they have an informed process here. So I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth.
Thank you, and thank you for having us today. Again, that was Chris Miller, our Executive Director with the Northeast Texas Regional Mobility Authority. I'm Elizabeth Story, working for Atkins as the project manager on Toll 49, Segment 6. So those are our introductions. Why are we here today? So the City of Tyler? Yes, of course.
Just one thing I'd like to say for, there's a lot of new people in the crowd today. You'll see the council members looking down. We actually have computer screens that will be the same that you have. So it's not that we're not listening. We're just focusing as well on our screen.
That's good for me to know as well. Otherwise, I'd start doing a dance up here. Pay attention.
No, we're paying attention.
Back in October, we were asked to get on your docket for, on your agenda to give you a presentation. So thank you to Mr. Broussard for making this happen. So not only are you leaders in your community, but the city actually serves as a participant in this process. Several of you have been a part of our working group during the feasibility study, providing local insight and input on both the process and the routes, as well as other community considerations. The goals and objectives, the study area evaluation criteria, and the final route options out of the feasibility study were developed with input from this working group and in concurrence with the stakeholder working group. So thank you for those who participated. The City of Tyler will also have a role in the environmental impact statement, both in that working group, which will continue to move forward, as well as you guys will be invited to participate as what is called a participating agency. The City of Tyler is on that list. I'll talk a little bit more about that agency coordination in a moment. So we appreciate your time today. Today, we're going to talk to you a little bit more about that environmental impact statement process, the timeline, and then how the community at large can participate in this process and then answer whatever questions you have. Just a brief overview of who the NET RMA is. They are an independent local government agency. It's a common misconception that they are considered a private entity. That's not true. They were created by Texas legislation back in 2001. NET RMA formed in 2004, and they follow all applicable state and federal law. They are governed by a 19-member board. They represent 14 counties, including Smith County here, and our chairwoman is appointed by the governor, while the other board members are appointed by county commissioners. They have their local office with staff represented today, and as well as the third-party experts, including Atkins. They are authorized to implement a wide range of transportation systems that includes airports and ferries, non-toll roads and toll roads. They own and operate Toll 49, which is their flagship process. So let's talk about Toll 49. It is what's currently open to traffic, stretches from Lindale north of Tyler down to about where White House is at 110. Segment 4, which is the segment that just most recently opened in 2018, is the Lindale Relief Route that takes you up to Lindale. There are transactions on Toll 49, near 40,000 per day. A transaction is one car under one gantry. So you, and your car might have several transactions going through several different gantries, but that is meeting the projections that they had. They are, what you see up on the screen is what is the vision of the Northeast Texas Regional Mobility Authority, which is called the East Texas Hourglass. What you see in blue is what is existing. It then would carry through that yellow section, which would be the proposed Segment 6. You would carry northward up on US 271, which will always remain non-toll. That is under the jurisdiction of the Texas Department of Transportation. Then the proposed Segment 7 is just south of Gilmer. You would take a right, then into Segment 8, which would land you at what is now US 59, and will one day be redesignated as I-369. That is the general vision of the Northeast Texas Regional Mobility Authority. Now, let's talk about Segment 6. Segment 6 is an initiative to explore potential route options to extend Toll 49 from where it ends at 110 up north to US 271. As you guys know, the City of Tyler and this area of Northeast Texas continues to grow with more people moving here, more businesses moving here. I hear you're the fourth-largest Chamber of Commerce in the state of Texas, and with UT Tyler continuing to expand, more people, more businesses, more students equals more congestion on your roads. And there is not a north-south route in East Smith County. So the problem we are trying to solve with this project is to improve mobility, provide reliable travel times, and enhance regional connectivity. Again, wanted to note, our project limits on this is from US 271 to where Toll 49 ends at Segment 5 at SH 110. We're asked often, why didn't we continue all the way up to I-20? That is part of that East Texas Hourglass concept of that you're taking US 271 up to the future Segment 7. Now, this doesn't mean that the Northeast Texas Regional Mobility Authority won't ever continue up to I-20, but at this point in the, in the study, we are ending up at 271. Now, this is just an idea at this, at this point. So how do you take an idea to a car on a road? Many years ago, there was a conceptual study where a route was identified, but to receive environmental clearance these days and approval for construction, the NET RMA needed to do a more robust set of studies with a broader study area. So we began with a feasibility study that started in 2018 and just ended in November of 2019. That's a 10,000-foot look to narrow down to three routes. We looked at a very broad study area, and that got narrowed down to three. We are now going to be moving into an environmental study and schematic design. Schematic design is a preliminary roadway design, and this will be significant study that is ahead of us. Now, the next step, should a route be approved for construction, we would then move into final design, acquiring right-of-way and adjusting utilities. That takes about three years. I forgot to mention that the environmental study is anticipated to end in 2022. Now, this third phase of the final design, right-of-way, and utilities, there's not a year assigned on that screen because we don't know, of course, if this project will move forward, and we don't have funding yet identified. This is all contingent on that decision and on funding. Now, a note on funding, people have been asking, where does the funding come from? It's not, we don't yet have that in place. That's, don't put the cart before the horse. But we anticipate, of course, having a bond sale, and then there's revenue from the existing toll road, and there's perhaps a federal loan that we'll look into. Following that, that third phase of that final design right-of-way and utilities would be construction, which takes about three years. So where are we now? The final proposed route options from the feasibility study are up on the screen. We covered a lot of ground with the feasibility study, and this type of study is conducted to identify high-level or critical elements of engineering impacts to stakeholders and the public and evaluate the economic feasibility of that potential roadway. So in short, it's how we reduced that study area, and now we have three routes to review. That, we'll be reviewing these in this environmental impact statement, which is a far more robust and rigorous study. The routes are the purple route, which is the closest to the City of Tyler. Directly adjacent to it is the yellow adjusted route, and then further to the east is the teal adjusted route. We'll be moving into the environmental impact statement shortly, and we are doing this in coordination with the Texas Department of Transportation's Environmental Affairs Division. Now, this is not our local Tyler District folks. These are the folks in Austin. The reason why they're at the table is because these projects used to be approved by the Federal Highway Administration. But we are, Texas is a pilot state, similar to, I believe, Alaska and California, of where the feds have delegated that to the state. And so the decision-makers of, do we build it, do we not build it, is with the Environmental Affairs Division down in Austin. So we'll be working with them. This process is very data-driven. A great deal of evaluation is done, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Now, here's the resource agencies where the City of Tyler does get involved with this, that we will be working with the federal-level agencies. Those included the EPA, FEMA. We'll be using state agencies like the Texas Historical Commission, and then local agencies like the City of Tyler, Smith County, those folks. There will be an agency scoping meeting that will, an invitation will be sent in the coming month for, to kick off that coordination. We also do a significant public involvement effort, reaching out to our stakeholders, impacted property owners, organizations, neighborhood associations, et cetera. And all of this will begin in the next month or so. An environmental impact statement is a very legal, complex process, so terminology does change. I wanted to note that in the feasibility study, we called it our proposed route options. In the EIS, they will be called the preliminary alternatives, which will be narrowed down to one alternative that gets called the build alternative, that is compared with the no-build. So I wanted to talk about the no-build or do-nothing alternative. This is something that is always on the table for approval. It is a baseline for comparison. We compare the impacts of building it versus the impacts of not building it, and so just definitely wanted to note that the no-build is an option. An environmental impact statement is the most rigorous study there is for transportation projects. There are several classes of environmental review. This is the highest level. We look at how the proposed project could impact the human and the natural environment, and we pick apart all the information that we gathered in the feasibility study. We add to it, we update it. It's quite a rigorous process that follows the National Environmental Policy Act of 1969. I liked adding that year because this is a tried-and-true process that has been used across the nation for projects of this size and complexity. I also wanted to give a shout-out for the, our census presentation. We use a lot of census data in transportation planning, so please definitely fill out your census. The elements of an environmental impact statement include, we hear a lot from the community, concerns about water resources. These routes cross creeks, floodplains, wetlands. We have, we need to look at what happens to water runoff off of the new concrete or asphalt. That is something that we study a great deal as part of this. We're counting trees, we're counting bird's nests, we're looking at all the historic resources that are in the area, and then, of course, traffic noise. There's concerns about the traffic noise coming out of a new roadway near to neighborhoods and schools. Those are things we look at, and of course, public input. The roadway design, we will be looking at an interim design similar to the existing Toll 49 with one lane in each direction with either a grassy median or a concrete barrier. The ultimate design is two lanes in each direction with either a grassy median The ultimate design is two lanes in each direction with either a grassy median or a concrete barrier. Safety considerations. Safety is our number-one priority, and the design will follow all applicable laws and regulations, and we will consider all the best practices from the existing Toll 49 and similar roadways across the state. One thing I'd like you guys to take away from this presentation is that routes are subject to change. We already are aware of some shifts that are, are needed with the, the three routes under consideration. So, what you see on the map today may change by the end of the year, may change next year. So, that, just really wanted to highlight that these routes are subject to change. The timeline of an environmental impact statement is on your screen currently. We are initiating it in early 2020 very soon. We will then be holding public meetings this year. There will be a public scoping meeting held open-house style in late spring 2020, not yet scheduled, but we will certainly be sure to, it'll be wildly advertised, widely advertised, and make sure that you guys are aware. We also will have an open house in the fall of 2020. Now, it's going to be in 2021 when we know which route. That's when we will identify the build alternative and hold the public hearing. But just because we have a route doesn't mean we have a decision. We get that decision in 2022 with what's called the Record of Decision from the Texas, Texas dot Environmental Affairs Division, and that's when we get the, yes, you can build that build alternative, or no, no, the no-build moves forward. Now, let's say that Texas dot says, yes, you can build that, build that route. Just because Texas dot says it doesn't mean we're going to do it. That's when the NET RMA Board of Directors vote. Between now and then, that is the, that is the one vote that the NET RMA Board has from a decision-making standpoint on these routes. A lot of folks have asked, will the NET RMA Board vote on which of the three? That's not going to happen. That's actually illegal. It's not a part of the NEPA process. The only time that they vote is if Texas dot says, yes, you can move forward, then the Board of Directors says, okay, yes, we'll move forward or not. And again, this timeline is subject to change as this is a very complex process, and there are all sorts of things that can happen. Public input, so let's talk about that. Recent public involvement, we've met with over 100 stakeholders in the past few months. We had a series of stakeholder meetings with potentially impacted property owners last fall. We've recently had a series of neighborhood presentations. We've met with the Chamber, and we've met with faith leaders across the study area, and today, we're here with the, with you guys. Upcoming, we'll have that agency scoping meeting in spring 2020, followed by the public scoping meeting held in open-house format. Again, those are not scheduled yet, but you guys will get those invites. And then, later in 2020, we will have that working group meeting again and the second open house. What will be shown at the public scoping meeting? This will be a very large meeting, and I anticipate a very healthy attendance. We will be having the draft coordination plan, which will talk about how we coordinate with agencies, the draft public involvement plan, how we will work with the community. That purpose and need, this is a formal EIS document that talks about why are we doing this project in the first place? What's the need for it, and what's the purpose of building it? We'll talk about those range of alternatives, those three routes under consideration, and the no-build. And then, what are those issues that we will be considering during the alternatives analysis as well as a schedule? And all of these items will be available for review at the public scoping meeting and online for comment. So, how to comment? At this time, we're not taking, we're not in a public comment period, but we definitely welcome it during the public comment period time. So, any time, any letters that we're receiving now, we're letting folks know, hold on to that, send it to us again. So, when we are in a comment form, a comment period, you can submit it online on the NET RMA website, you can email it to me, you can mail it to the NET RMA offices. And then, we really want to hone in on doing, sending in your comments during our formal meetings, which is that public scoping meeting in the spring, the open house in the fall, and the public hearing in 2021. We will be advertising wide and clear, like, when does that comment period start? When does it end? It's usually 15 days before, 15 days after, but we'll, we'll be very clear on that, that if you submit your comment during that time, it gets put into the decision-making document. So, the importance of getting your comments in. Ways to not comment? If you are giving us a comment at a Board of Directors meeting, you're always welcome to come to a NET RMA's Board of Directors meeting and present a comment. It does not get included in the EIS process, so I did want to make that note. Does my input make a difference? A lot of folks ask this question, so we wanted to double down on this. Your input is helping us better understand community concerns and values. And comments are not a vote. We don't, we don't count them to consider, you know, one way or another, but it does help inform the decision-making process. So, it is incredibly important that folks participate. So, we invite you to visit NETRMA.org to learn more about the project, sign up for updates to make sure that you are on the list. You can either be on an email list or a mailing list or both to get those, those updates. Ask us questions. We have a hotline number you can call to talk to us if you have any additional questions, and we really encourage folks to participate in the public scoping meeting. This is a lengthy, complex process, and I would love to come back later in the year to give you guys an update as, as we move forward through this process, and we do appreciate your patience. Again, it's a lengthy process. A lot of folks have asked, you can just make the decision now. This is a two-year, two-plus-year process to get from an idea to a decision, and so, we do appreciate everyone's patience through this. And please participate, stay engaged. We appreciate those of you guys who have been involved. And, and that is the end of my presentation.
Questions? You can go back to the map of where the three options are.
I have an observation, Elizabeth. I had the honor to serve on the very first committee. It wasn't even called Board, and it wasn't an RMA at that point, but you mentioned Hourglass. And at the point of those discussions before any of this started, the Hourglass was the key word, and it was to skirt the southern part of Smith County and the northern part of Gregg County, which was where it got the Hourglass concept. And it was to keep traffic from coming into the city and being able to go around the city. It appears to me that the purple and the yellow lines are not skirting the city like the western part of Loop 49. Was that on purpose? And I know you haven't done the environmental impact study yet. Will those two areas impact more people than, for instance, the teal route?
The purple and yellow, what really made them rise to the top in the feasibility study was that they had, more traffic was going to be on them. We had, did a traffic analysis, and of the, all of the routes that we looked at from, in East Smith County, from closer to Tyler to further away from Tyler, there was more cars were using those routes. And we want to build, we want to build a road that folks will use. And so, that was one of the big reasons why those rose to the top. They were also of the options, they were the cheaper options to build. They had, they had a lower cost than some of the other ones. In the environmental impact statement, cost is not included in our analysis, so that's, that was the only time, feasibility study is the only time to really look at that. And the traffic, we do definitely look at because we don't want to build a road that no one is going to use. They also had less impacts to some of the natural environment elements that some of the other routes did. However, on the flip side, the purple and yellow do impact more private property.
So, is there a one, two, three, or you're just right now looking at all?
During an environmental impact statement process, we have to look at all three equally. There's, there's no ranking at this time. We have to, we have to love our children equally here. They all have pros, they all have cons. None of these routes are perfect. It's one of the reasons why they're subject to change as we learn more. During the feasibility study, we're looking at databases, and we're, you know, it's a drive-by windshield review of things. During the EIS, we walk the, we walk all routes. We get write-of-entry letters so that private property allows us on, and that's when, you know, we're counting bird's nests, counting trees.
But, but at that point, cost is not considered?
During the environmental impact statement, cost is not considered.
Thank you.
I think fair mentioning also that there were as many as 50 routes looked at. In June, the, essentially, the public received information about six routes that then now are the three, and these are the top-scoring routes.
Yeah, I, I noticed as you put the whole map up, what happened to the Hourglass? It doesn't look like an Hourglass anymore.
Well, I, I, you have enough.
No, that's it.
Okay, so, I will just put my two cents in, and I would agree with Ms. Dory on several items you just mentioned. You mentioned earlier that UT Tyler continues to expand, and that university will be a major impact to this community as it goes forward. You also talked about traffic analysis, which actually helps you pay for your toll road. If you don't have people driving, you don't pay back the debt. And that the less expensive route will help also in paying back. And so, I meant to wear my purple shirt today, and I actually forgot that the presentation was coming, but the purple route is my favorite route, and I think it would be very impactful for the UT Tyler campus as it grows. For the city of Tyler trying to move people in and out of that area is very difficult. So, we, in the long run, that will be very beneficial if the purple route is selected. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank.
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
Sure. The routes that, as they're proposed right now, still have, I believe you said they still have enough wiggle room to move them?
Yes, sir.
So that the routes aren't in stone?
Definitely wanted to double down on that comment. Routes are subject to change. We are already looking at things. We will be presenting these routes in the spring of 2020, but to get more comments to better understand where these routes may need to wiggle, and so, routes are subject to change.
Great. Thank you all very much for coming today. I appreciate it very much. And now, we'll move into the zoning items and thank still all the zoning folks for being patient while we did that discussion. Good morning.
Good morning. This first application is a special-use permit request to allow for a trailer to be, remain on the property for a period of two years. This is to house a CT scanner. The area is predominantly commercially zoned and commercially used. There's also goodwill to the east or to the west. The applicant is requesting this permit for a two, for two years, and this would allow them to store the scanner while they do an expansion of this location. The trailer will be placed or is placed in the parking lot close to the building and outside of any setbacks or fire lanes. The Planning and Zoning Commission by a 5-0 vote recommends approval of this request.
Any questions of Heather?
Is that that ER hospital?
Yes, the hospitality.
Hospitality.
Move to approve, Z-1.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Z-2.
This is a request to change the zoning from multifamily to single-family. The applicant is wanting to develop a single-family home on this lot, and this area is predominantly constructed as single-family homes, and there are some undeveloped lots as well. The Future Land Use Guide is a single-family medium-low density, which is consistent with this request, and the applicant would like to request the R1B for a single-family home. With the 30 notices mailed, three were returned in favor, none in opposition, and the Planning and Zoning by a 7-0 vote recommends approval.
Questions of Heather? Move to approve, Z-2. Motion by McGee, a second by McKeller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Z-3.
The applicant is requesting a develop, a development of 18 detached single-family homes. It is currently, the area is currently developed with single-family homes as well as undeveloped land. The Future Land Use Guide is single-family medium-low density, and this request is consistent with the Future Land Use Guide. The, the lots are smaller in size and also similar to lots in the Chapel Woods development. Of the 32 notices mailed, there were zero returned in favor or in opposition. There were some notices, six notices, that were returned outside of the 200-foot radius, and they were in opposition and with concerns about density. However, this development is very similar to surrounding developments that you see here on the map. The Planning and Zoning Commission by a 7-0 vote recommends approval.
And we have no cards on this item. Are there any questions of Heather?
None. I move to approve, Z-3.
Second. Motion by Westbrook, a second by Warren. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
This is a request to change zoning in order to develop 24 townhomes. This area is surrounded by the Tyler Independent School District, Jim Plieler Institute, Instructional Complex, also with undeveloped land, single-family homes, and the Future Land Use Guide would need to be amended to single-family medium-low density or from single-family medium-low density to single-family and single-family attached. The applicant is proposing to develop 24 attached two-story units along this corridor here at West Glenwood Boulevard with a maximum height of 42 feet, which is consistent with single-family homes. The proposed setbacks are 25 in the front, 15 in the rear yard, five feet on the side and corner. The property will be accessed off of a street, off of a private gated driveway along Kennedy Avenue. Site plan also proposes a dog park, tree plantings, and six-feet-tall wooden fence along the side and rear property lines. Of the 26 notices mailed, zero returned in favor, one in opposition with a 1.89% protest, and the Planning and Zoning by a 7-0 vote recommends approval.
Questions of Heather? Move to approve, Z-4.
Second.
Motion by McGee, a second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Bob, you know, I'm just, that place where this is, it's an entry point into one of the most beautiful parts of town, and that has been those little, I don't know what you call them, but I call it blight, little houses. And to have those removed and have this put in there in an entry point to the community is fabulous. So, tell your clients, thank you.
Well, you're welcome. We, we're going to spend more getting asbestos out of there than just about.
I beg. Thank you.
Well, appreciate it. I'll let them know.
Z-5.
This is a request to change the zoning from general commercial to, or light commercial to PUR with the site plan. The applicant is requesting this to develop single-family homes, and to the northwest and east are zoned for C1 light commercial, and to the north is the location of Three Lakes Middle School. And the surrounding property is also undeveloped with some single-family homes to the south. This is identified as mixed-use center on the Future Land Use Guide. The request is consistent with the guide. The applicant is proposing to develop 18 detached single-family homes at a density at just under five units per acre. The development will be accessed through a private street, as you can see here at the top of the map there, that intersects with Three Lakes Parkway. This item was tabled previously, and I believe it needs to be removed from the council. It was on the council agenda, was it not? It needs to probably, we need a vote to untable this item. And then...
Oh, Z-5?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Do you do that first? Do that now?
Do that now, yes, sir.
I make a motion to untable, Z-5.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Sellers to untable the, the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
So, so this item would be a request to change the zoning to planned unit residential with the site plan that you see before you. Of the 15 notices mailed, there were zero returned in opposition or in favor, and the Planning and Zoning Commission by a 6-0 vote recommends approval of the change from C1 to PUR.
Gated? Is it gated?
The, let's see. Do we know if it's gated? They haven't, they haven't indicated that it would be gated at this point.
Any questions of Heather on this item? You have cards. I do have one card, but it's here for supporter questions online.
I would just like to make a comment. I've actually met with the developer...
I've actually met with the developer of this property. We've been kind of talking back and forth, and I think this is going to be a great win for that area, particularly with Three Lakes Middle School. I'm hoping, I'm looking at the city manager when I say this, that hopefully we can eventually get that road, because I think that, you know, get Three Lakes extended on out, because I think that's going to really help that area to grow and give us, give us a good partnership with, with the developers. And I know Mike is here, and so, good job. Thank you for your support.
I'm just happy to see more residential come into this area, because there's been a lot of commercial stuff around Free Lakes Middle School, and I think this will just help that school district.
So is that a motion? Is that a second? Yes, sir.
If I could, just as far as support on Councilman McGee's comments, because he's actually making a very good point that we're in conversation with the developer on. It'll be a different agreement that comes through the council, but for the ability to extend Three Lakes Parkway to anywhere it will connect with Old Noonday. So that will help with the traffic circulation over this whole area to give alternatives beyond just dumping out onto Old Jackson.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And now we go to a public hearing. Oh, some people want to leave. You'll go ahead. Okay, so now we're going to go into a public hearing, right? Or do you make the presentation first?
Right. We're going to a public hearing, sir. We're going to be here for a public hearing on the amendment to the use of funds for the CD, Community Development Block Grant.
Okay.
And this is going to be for unused funds from previous years that we want to reallocate to a new project for this year that wasn't identified prior when we went through our annual plan. I'm going to present to you our new Community Development Block Grant Manager, Dustin. He is actually a city employee already. He is an Assistant City Attorney with our department, with the city of Tyler, and he is be moving over to Community Development. So I'm going to allow him to go through the presentation and the details of the amendment. Okay?
Sounds great. Well, good morning, Mayor and Council. As Ms. Wade said, I'm Dustin Wilson. I'm moving over to Neighborhood Services, and this is simply a request for the council to hold a public hearing to gain public comment and then to approve the substantial amendment. And this is, of course, all in accordance with HUD regulations and the citizen, or the city's citizen participation plan. Excuse me. The purpose of the substantial amendment is to reallocate unused grant funds from prior years to a new public facilities project on Emmett J. Scott Park. The project's going to have a transformative impact on the area, on the community, and improve the lives of the residents in that surrounding low-to-modded-income area. The project will also provide recreational opportunities for the youth concentrated in that area. This is a map of Emmett J. Scott Park currently, just pulled from Google Maps, and currently the only sidewalk on this area, it runs along North Confederate. It goes from that southeast corner to that northeast corner. And the only access ramp for that sidewalk is about approximately in the middle of Confederate. There is an access ramp at each of the four corners, but, and I've got pictures on the next slide, none of those access ramps actually connect to that sidewalk. Additionally, that sidewalk is fairly narrow. When I visited the park, it was probably three to four feet in width. Also, there is a basketball court on the park, but it is right next to Nut Bush, kind of in the, in the middle of it, but it is adjacent to that street. And here are some of the pictures I took. That first picture on your left is a picture of that access ramp. It just kind of ends. It's there. That second picture in the middle is a picture of where that sidewalk connects to Confederate. And as you can see, there's not an access ramp at that point. And then that third picture on your right is a picture of the sidewalk currently, and as you can, might be kind of hard to tell, but it is fairly narrow. This is a picture of that basketball court I mentioned. As you can tell, it is directly adjacent to Nut Bush. There is a backstop, but again, it is directly adjacent to a street. And I believe it is a Texas College facility on the other side of that street, so it is somewhat busy. To me, that's just not a safe location for a basketball court. Additionally, it's underneath the trees, which of course shed leaves, other debris, limbs, which could, which make it difficult to play basketball. Then I also have just a couple of general pictures of the park. As you can see, there's not really a whole lot out there. There is a swing set. There's also some playground equipment. Excuse me. There is a bathroom, and if you can tell in this picture, there's also a porta potty out there. There's just not a whole lot out there. And so, switch to the document viewer. This is a, this is a proposed plan for the park improvement. Of course, any finalized plans would come through the Parks Department, but as it is currently proposed, there's going to be a walking trail all the way around the park. It's, it'll be approximately, or I say approximately, it would be a quarter mile in length, so four times around the park will be a mile. Secondly, that, as proposed, the sidewalk will be six feet wide. And then the basketball court will be moved from adjacent to Nut Bush to the middle of the park, meaning it's much safer for the kids to play, you know, when the ball gets loose or what have you. Additionally, as proposed, there's going to be new playground equipment. There's going to be a pavilion, and to me, it's, it's an exciting, it's an exciting plan. It's an exciting improvement. If we could go back to PowerPoint, please. This chart shows where all of the funding is going to come from, and as you can tell, it's going to come from prior year's grant. The funds were either allocated to other projects and simply not used, or simply just, the funds were never obligated on anything. And again, the staff is requesting that the city council hold a public hearing for citizen participation, obtain citizen comments, and then approve the substantial amendment to the 2019 action plan for the Community Development Block Grant.
Can you go back to that slide with the dollars?
Yes, sir.
So that $714,000, that's all CDBG funds?
Yes, sir.
And that'll pay for 100% of the improvements to the park?
As it's currently planned, yes, sir.
Now, when I, when I do a public hearing, I used to use that gavel, and you told me I don't have to do that. Or do I need to do that?
You can use the gavel whenever you prefer, sir.
Okay, well, I've been doing it for, I've been doing it for so many years. At this time, we'll go into a public hearing, so if there's anyone that would like to come up and comment, please feel very welcome to come up front and speak to this item. Seeing no one here to participate in the public hearing, now I will close the public hearing portion and reconvene in the city council. So go ahead.
The staff would just ask that the council approve the substantial amendment to the 2019 action plan.
Are there any questions or comments?
I would just like to say that I am, I'm very proud to hear of the proposed project that you're going to have for the former Lincoln Park. It was Lincoln Park for me when I was growing up, that we used to spend a lot of time over there, so I appreciate what is getting ready to happen for it.
Absolutely.
And if I can make a motion on that afterwards.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that we carry out what you propose for Lincoln Park, Emmett Scott Park. Yes.
Motion by McKeller, a second by McGee. Are there any other questions or comments?
That is for the, the overall substantial amendment for.
That's correct. And then the park plan will come, go through probably the Parks Board, and then come back to the council on a later date, correct? To a break.
Yeah.
So we're just approving the substantial.
Amendment.
Amendment to the CBD.
CDBG.
CBDG.
CBDG.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I never, I have never been able to do that right for 10 years either. But, and for, if you're unfamiliar with what that is, those are federal funds that are set aside for community development. It's called a Community Development Block Grant Fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Dustin. And R1? Mr. Newhouse?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. It's good to be with you this morning. On page 41 of the consent decree, the city of Tyler is required to perform condition assessments and remedial measures. We are also required to assess sewer lines, manholes, and perform CCTVing. In order for us to do that, we have to be able to obtain access to these locations, and some of them are not easily accessible. So Mr. Newhouse will present.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
This, this item this morning has to do with some construction for some easement improvements on two of our right-of-ways in particular. These two proposed construction projects have an estimate of $43,144, one of which is near Shiloh Road and the other is north of the, of the airport, north of 64. Some, I have a picture of the one near Shiloh Road. There's, that kind of gives you an idea of what a challenge is getting down some of our easements. So beyond the CCTVing, we've got additional maintenance and future inspections, and then, of course, construction work to do. So that's why we are finding these areas like we indicated previously and bringing them to you for approval to proceed with construction work. So quite simply, this morning, we recommend that you approve funding to cover the estimated construction expenses of $43,144 and a resolution as well to pay for this with future debt.
So, so the easements are already in place? You're just clearing it out?
That's right. That's right. They're there. They're, they're prescribed easements, or they're easements that are, that are already identified, if you will, they're, they're where our sanitary sewer lines are, and they're generally 20, 20 feet wide, 10 foot each side, so it's just a matter of, like this particular easement on that, that one picture there, there's actually three creek crossings on it, but we are able to access part of it from two different ways on the end and another part from the center, but this particular one is chopped up so much that, that we need to do some work like this. And the other one is similar. It's not quite as dramatic as this one. You can actually, when you stand in it, your head doesn't go, you can actually see across it, but you can't actually drive across it. So, yes, they're all, are all in place, and there, there are quite a few of these. Some of them are just, quite honestly, bare. They're going to require some additional engineering to, to, to do some construction like this, so we don't have a, have them wash out immediately after we do the work. But these two in particular, we can move forward with.
That's very good. You know, I, I think that this item, I think there's another one we're going to vote on for getting us on the other side, right? I mean, we, we, we became so far behind, we have so much work to do, but I applaud you all again for trying to get out ahead of us instead of just waiting for issues to happen. Let's, let's really be proactive, and you all have gotten that message and really done a great job at working towards the future. So thank you for, for your efforts on that. I applaud it, because it's, I want to get on the right side of the curve instead of the wrong side.
Thank you.
And just to add to that, you guys have a maintenance plan in place to continue to maintain those right-of-ways.
That is correct, and, and that maintenance plan is, is, is very much in flux at this point because of these challenges, but, but yes, we, we do have a plan in place and are working on it.
Great. So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve, R1.
Motion from Westbrook, second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. R2.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
This is a request to the city council to consider adopting a resolution or resolutions of support for various affordable housing tax credit project proposals and the approval of a waiver of development or permit fees in the amount of $500 for each awarded project. The Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs Tax Credit Program is one of the primary means of directing private capital toward the development and preservation of affordable rental housing for lower-income households. The tax credits are awarded to eligible participants to offset a portion of the federal tax liability in exchange for the production or preservation of affordable housing. The allocation of tax credits is a very competitive process. Projects receive 17 points, at least this year, they're receiving 17 points, for a resolution of support from a local government such as the city of Tyler. The city of Tyler Resolution of Support for Projects will strengthen the developers' application to receive this allocation of low-income housing tax credits through the TDHCA. The various entities are requesting a resolution of support for their individual applications from the city of Tyler that would significantly improve their opportunity. The, the, you previously, on the previous screen, saw a listing of the applicants. We originally had five. We had two that withdrew. Those are indicated in the red, so the three are still asking for that resolution of support. Also here, you see a map of the three locations of the requests, and I would like to point out that while supporting developer access to this funding for affordable housing production is consistent with our community goals, a resolution of support does not suggest a request to rezone properties associated with these proposals will be supported. So of the three that were submitted, one does not need a rezoning request in order to build a multifamily type of housing development. And with that, the city staff is recommending that the council consider a resolution or resolutions to these requests.
So, so the, is Laurel Flats, that, that's zoned correctly?
Yes.
So the, the other two are zoned correctly?
Right. The Heritage Grande is currently zoned agricultural, and then the residence at Pine Ridge appears to be zoned for industrial.
And what is the north-south street at Heritage?
For which one?
The north-south street, Grande, and what is the other street?
Copeland.
New Copeland.
What?
New Copeland.
Oh, okay.
You know.
Oh, for Heritage Grande?
Yes.
Yes, adjacent to Central Baptist Church. Kind of put that as a, as a reference.
First, let me just throw this out there. The Laurel Flats deal is taking an existing apartment complex and redoing the apartment complex very close to Chris's, Attorney Mother Frances', and with all the activity in the, in the medical district, it just seems like the, the natural to, to throw our resolution behind versus splitting it between one, two, or three, it just seems like a natural just to totally support one, but I'm just one guy.
Okay, so I have two cards here that say only speak if there are questions. Do either one of, does Mr. Algier or Mr. Prichner like to speak? Okay. And they're shaking their head, no. So, okay.
So you're saying not support the other two, only support the residences?
If I was going to make a motion right now, it'd be to make a motion to do a resolution for the Laurel Flats project.
Okay, is that a?
That is, that's a motion.
That is a motion.
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion to support Laurel Flats on Houston and Baxter.
I'll second that.
Okay, now I have a motion and a second from Westbrook. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
only support the residences?
If I was going to make a motion right now, it'd be to make a motion to do a resolution for the Laurel Flats project.
Okay, is that a?
That is, that's a motion.
That is a motion. Okay, so I have a motion to support Laurel Flats on Houston and Baxter.
I'll second that.
Okay, now I have a motion and a second from Westbrook. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? The House have it.
Thank you, sir.
It appears that Laurel Flats has the city's support or the council's support. Okay, so now on to R-3.
Let's see, here he is. Mayor, I'll kind of get this one started and Joe Frehlin can come join us. This one, if you may remember, during the last legislative session, the 2019 legislative session, the Texas Legislature enacted as far as the House bill that created the Rose City Municipal Utility District. And with that were a number of different conditions that needed to be put in play. But one of them is the creation of a Board of Directors, of which the city has three seats and the county has two seats. And Joe Frehlin will, as far as kind of brief us a little bit further on the details about the Rose City Mud and the Board of Directors and the pieces at play. We do have a recommendation also for who we'd recommend for put the council to appoint in those three seats. So with that, Joe?
Good morning, Mayor, Council. As Ed just explained, in 2019, the legislature created, well, provided for the creation of the Rose City Municipal Utility District. It was created primarily to address the lack of adequate centralized sewer service in that area roughly between Tyler and Bullard. The actual creation of the district is a multi-step process. The first step is the appointment of the Board of Directors. And as Ed said, three of the board are appointed by the City of Tyler. Two are appointed by Smith County Commissioners Court. The initial Board of Directors coming from the City of Tyler serve for a four-year term. And so the resolution would appoint three board members for a four-year term. And the staff's recommendation on board members are Mayor Heinz, Sam Maseak, and John Nix. And so I'm available for any questions any of y'all may have regarding the district or the additional steps. Let me go ahead and give you those. So the additional steps to the creation of the district are, once the board is appointed, they will meet. They will work out the details of what the district will do. They will have to come back to council to get the consent of the City Council, the City of Tyler, to the creation of the district. And through that consent process, the city can impose conditions and restrictions on the district. And then the third and final step is they have to go to the voters within the district boundaries and get a vote, a majority vote of those voters approving or confirming the creation of the district. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
And this is a long-term project?
It is. The only one that we're really under a time constraint right now is the actual creation of the board by September of 2020, if I remember correctly, as far as the House bill is the provision in there. But the other steps are ones that will take time and need a Board of Directors ultimately to kind of work with as we kind of go through a number of different questions and issues for the full, as far as establishment of this municipal utility district.
Okay, great. And so you just need approval of the?
That's correct, Mayor.
Of the board?
Yes, sir. And again, the staff's recommending is Martin Heinz, Sam Maseak, and John Nix.
And I think those are excellent members because of the historical perspective they have of what we've been through the last few years. And it's nice to know the mayor's not going to disappear.
No, I'll gladly help on this item. And we definitely have a long-term perspective on it.
I make a motion to approve the Mud Board.
Second.
A motion by Sellers, a second by McGee. All in favor? Opposed, the House have it. Thank you.
Joe, if you'll just stay just one quick minute.
Yeah, good.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to make sure that you all, I know you are aware of Mr. Freeman's involvement with the City of Tyler. He is our main water attorney through Matthews and Freeman that throughout the years, over twenty years, has helped the city with our water and the sanitary sewer issues. And he works in Austin and helps us with the TCEQ and all of those issues. We want to thank Mr. Freeman for coming up today.
Absolutely. And, yes, Ed, he has been a huge benefit to this community because I've been involved with him on several issues now for the last ten years. And it's, you do a great job. So thank you for your service too.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Company today seeking a resolution, making an application.
Let me, I think, oh, wait, no, that's a, where are you?
Well, but if, Mr. Mayor.
Or you are six.
Kind of, I think you're jumping, you're jumping a little early.
Yeah, R-four.
Cassandra, did the council take an action on R-three?
Yes.
Did it actually vote it? Okay.
Yes, but then we're on to R, I have R-four on my.
Yes, R-four.
Calendar being Paul Newhouse again. Well, we love you. Jimmy, thank you for your enthusiasm. Yeah, we're on R-four.
Yes, we have.
Yes, Mayor and Council, in 2017, City of Tyler entered into a consent decree, as you already know. On page forty-one of the consent decree, again, condition assessments are being performed on sanitary sewer collection system. The assessments began in 2017. Inspections of gravity sewer mains as well as the inspection of manholes is ongoing and will be ongoing for the next few years. And Mr. Newhouse will present this item.
Good morning again. This is an item similar to that that was presented in December in which we asked for some funding for some of that preventative creek crossing work. We've got three more that we've identified here. They're all on Black Fork Creek. And the total estimate for those three improvements is one-twenty-six-seven-seventy-five. Some pictures of the improvements that we are proposing. You can see there, they are, you know, they're not quite, I guess, top. The top one there is where the forty-two-inch cross is, Black Fork Creek. And it's kind of hard to see, but the bank is sloughing off there and that manhole will soon be exposed and subject to failure at some opportune time when the creek's flooding and it's hard to get to it. The bottom one there is a creek crossing that's got a nice bow to it and it spans quite a bit straight across the creek. And then the last one there on the bottom right, that is there near Waldorf Park, north of Liberty. And you can see the crack there where, again, the bank is sloughing off. So we want to do some preventative maintenance there to prevent a big problem.
Very good. I'm glad to see that.
So again, the recommendation is you would approve the expenditure of the funds and a resolution to pay for the debt.
Move to approve R-four.
Second.
Motion by Warren, a second by Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the House have it. Now, I do have a request to pull R-five. It just, what do you think? That wasn't a question. I do have a request.
R-five is there, R-six is not.
Yeah, R-five is pulled, so now R-six, right?
No. Yes, reverse it. R-six, the ETCog grant application is going to be pulled.
Oh, okay.
R-five, which is.
Okay, so R-six is pulled and we're moving forward with R-five.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good morning again. I'll be back with you this morning. We are coming today seeking a resolution to make an application to ETCog. We do this annually as they put out the JAG grants for us to go seek equipment we think we can use. A piece we're seeking this year. Every year, we do events. We have City Fest this year, Red Dirt Festival, East Texas Fair, but other events that are on the square all the time and they're large public gatherings. This piece of equipment here would allow us to put a video surveillance in the middle of it, shoot a boom up into it. So we're not looking at everything eye-level so we can actually have an overview of the actual event itself to get a better understanding of the safety and the factors that need to go along with it. We'll make that application of forty thousand nineteen dollars to ETCog in the next few weeks. If there's a request for any matching funds, which we do this every year. Last year, they fully funded the project. We saw it. And we're hoping they'll do that again this year. But if there is any request for matching funds, we'll program those into the asset fortress size so it doesn't come to the taxpayers themselves. And that's our application there. So if you, we request that City Council consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager and Tyler Police Department to purchase and allow one mobile post-system security camera trailer in the amount of forty thousand nineteen dollars through grant funding from the East Texas Council of Government Justice Assistance Grant.
Okay, thank you. So we, I'll entertain a motion to pass R-five.
Move to approve R-five.
A motion by Sellers.
Second.
Second by McKeller. All in favor? Opposed, the House have it. Thank you. We are pulling R-six.
Yes, sir.
So now we're on to R-seven, which is, Ms. Pullman?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, back on November fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, Centerpoint Energy filed an application to increase its gas rates in all cities that exercise original jurisdiction within the Beaumont, East Texas division. Centerpoint is seeking to increase its gas rates by a total of six point eight million per year with this statement to increase. That includes an increase in residential rates as well as a small increase in general service, small rates in general service, large volume rates. According to Centerpoint, the impact on an average residential customer with this increase would be about two dollars and eighty-four cents per month in the Beaumont Purchase Gas Adjustment Area, the PGA area, about a dollar forty-one cents in the East Texas PGA area, about eight dollars and nineteen cents in the Tyler area, and five dollars and twenty-one cents in the northeast PG area. So if you will recall, we came to you on that filing back in December eleventh of two thousand and nineteen along with the East Texas Coalition of Cities. And we requested that the City Council suspend those rates to give the cities and the coalition an opportunity to review the application and the filing and to determine whether the increase was reasonable. Well, that has happened and the ETCC has engaged experts to help us in this review. The review has come back and the recommendation by the East Texas Coalition of Cities and their experts is that the city, along with the coalition cities in this area, deny the rates. And that's what this resolution is coming to you for. Now, if the council decides to approve this resolution, what it will do is deny the rate change application that is being proposed by Centerpoint. It will find that the Centerpoint application rates and the request are unreasonable. And it will require Centerpoint to maintain its existing rates. It will allow the city and the coalition of cities through the ETCC to begin negotiations with Centerpoint on these rates. The resolution, in accordance with state law also, will require Centerpoint to pay the reasonable rate case expenses of the city through the East Texas Coalition. And it will allow, as I've said, the coalition to do the overall negotiation for all of the cities that are in the Beaumont, East Texas area. And so that is what we are here recommending for the council to do that. We have talked back and forth with our attorney in the East Texas Coalition, and that is Thomas Riccardo. He's indicated that, you know, we have done this in the past. In the past, such an endeavor in terms of the rate case and the negotiations, generally around ninety-five thousand dollars has been what has been the expenses of such endeavor and that Centerpoint reimburses all the cities for that. We get an invoice, we just forward that invoice on.
And again, this is something that has been fairly routine through my history.
Yes, as, you know, we haven't had a, much of rate cases from Centerpoint on the gas.
Right.
But when they do, generally, it's been under the grip and the cities have not had the opportunity at all to even do anything about it. So when it's finally under this final rate case timeframe, five years, and the city has the opportunity to then actually go in and review the rates.
I believe you did it five years ago.
It's been a while. Well, no, they've been coming in every year, but the city has not had, under law, the opportunity to actually even do anything. So now this is the opportunity and the time for us to do that.
And you think it's the best case?
We have, yes, in contact with our East Texas Coalition and they are the ones that handle all of our utilities. We meet more than quarterly. And based on those, the experts and that coalition's recommendation, I do.
Okay, great. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve R-seven.
Second.
A motion by Westbrook, a second by McKeller. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the House have it. And duly before you get started, we're going to take a quick three-minute break. Okay? Thank you very much. We're coming back from a recess. Ms. Goodgame?
Yes.
Here on O-one.
Good morning. O-one is a request that the City Council consider adoption of an ordinance amending the Tyler City Code, Chapter Two, to revise and adopt certain usage fees related to Liberty Hall. Specifically, we're looking to simplify our current block rate structure into single hourly rates. The amended ordinance also adds specific wording allowing for the outsourcing of concessions at Liberty Hall, clarifies pass-through costs associated with subcontracting services for the hall, and allows the hall to grant a discount to qualified 501(c)(3)'s and those frequently running that facility for public performances. So our request is predicated largely on feedback that we've received from our renters. Specifically, our current ordinance, it's not an hourly rate, it's block rates over extended periods of time. They find it complicated to read and understand. Some of those block rates overlap so then it becomes confusing as to what rate applies. They, there are no current discounts for our nonprofit partners and we frequently are requested to give those. And there's no rate accommodation for theater productions. And so in the revised ordinance, we can talk about what that looks like. Another thing to consider is that over the last ten years, we have not amended our rental rates. We have, however, as with any business, the cost to operate that business continues to grow year after year. So we did look at that. This is us right now. Another thing that we are considering, we considered when we were looking to establish an hourly rate, our recent improvements that we've made at Liberty Hall over the last two years. We've invested close to a hundred thousand dollars in new lighting and sound, dynamic lighting, a new switcher, more security cameras, better speakers. We've rehung speakers, just to name a few of the projects. And that's been collaboration between us and donors, specifically Phil Burks and Friends. They've made huge investments of time and capital to this project. So when we were looking at establishing an hourly rate, a fair market rate, we did look at some of our, I won't say competitors, but those that are like us within our market. Specifically, we did look at the Texan. So that's a historic theater in Athens, Texas. We also looked at Caldwell Auditorium. And in that, when we looked at those hourly rates and we just, we ran some numbers against current shows like a Saturday concert, which usually takes about eight hours when you factor load-in, load-out, sound check. We were seeing between a hundred and eighty and two hundred and forty as an hourly rate. So when we were putting together our proposed rates, we factored that in as well and we settled on, we thought that a hundred and seventy-five per hour on prime nights, a hundred and fifty per hour on our Sunday through Wednesday so those aren't considered our prime nights. We also built in lower rates for rehearsals and for dark days. Those are days that theater productions may be storing equipment at the hall and upcoming to their production so we can't rent those days to others. So it's not as expensive as doing a full day at that prime rate. We also have included discounts to 501(c)(3)'s nonprofits of about ten percent in those that are, that do rent the hall frequently throughout the year. So passing on some savings to them. So our new ordinance is easy to read. to them. So our new ordinance is easy to read, has no time overlaps, and again, there's discounts. Do y'all have any questions?
Was any thought given to the promoters that bring in entertainers?
Yes.
In regard to the profit they're making versus the charge we're...
Yes. And so what we actually did when we were looking at these rates, because, again, the way that the ordinance is written out, it's hard to do an hour-to-hour comparison because of those blocks. We actually took these rates and we applied them to existing contracts that we had, so we could see. And we're seeing about a $15 an hour to $25 an hour change in most of those cases. What we are also seeing, though, is for some of them, because, again, the way the time is done now, it's blocked, those that don't need all of the time that they were previously paying for, they're actually going to be realizing some savings there. So it's a more equitable ordinance.
Any other questions?
It's just a great facility. It's rate change, you should just top it off, should finish it up. Yeah. With that, I move to approve O1.
Second.
A motion by Westbrook, a second by McKeller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. O2.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. It's my first time presenting to y'all, so I'm a little nervous. So today we're...
Don't do it.
Today, we're presenting a request for the city council to consider adopting an ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter 2, Finance and Taxation, Article 9, Commercial Filming Regulations, to revise and adopt certain fees and procedures to make Tyler a more film-friendly destination and offer enhanced opportunities to filmmakers. As you may know, the Film Friendly Texas Program and Certification provides training and ongoing guidance to statewide community representatives on how to effectively market their communities as filming destinations and how to efficiently accommodate on-location filming activity. Currently, more than 130 communities representing various regions of Texas are Film Friendly certified. Tyler earned the Texas Film Friendly designation in 2016, recognizing Tyler as a community that welcomes filmmakers and has a bounty of filming sites, natural resources, unique architecture, and talent to include in any production. To date, we have processed 11 applications, including, if you may have seen in the past couple of weeks, Day Tripper, that came, PBS show that came to town and filmed a whole episode on Tyler. So that came through us. On this, no updates have been made to the Commercial Filming Regulations ordinance since its adoption in 2016. Thus, the ordinance was reviewed and revised based on our processes and feedback from filmmakers and the Texas Film Commission. The benefits of amending the ordinance include fees for street closures will now match the Tyler Police Department's Street Closure Ordinance, more appropriate turnaround timeframes for permits, and affordable fees for filmmakers. Before, we were asking them for 10 days in advance, and sometimes that's not reasonable for filmmakers that are needing quick turnaround. It eliminates fees and rules that were difficult to regulate. For example, we had a fee, application fee, and that really discouraged people from applying for film permits and filming on their own without telling us. So we're wanting to encourage people to let us know when they're filming, so we can assist them and even promote their projects after they're done. And the application form is now available online and ADA accessible as a fillable form. So it is recommended that the city council adopt the attached ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter 2, to revise and adopt certain fees and procedures to make Tyler a more film-friendly destination and offer enhanced opportunities to filmmakers.
So did you say film permit?
Yes.
So you have to get a permit to film?
Yes. So to film inside of Tyler, you need to get a permit. But it really is not a, we're not, okay, I don't know how to explain this. You can film without it. We just encourage people to film it, just so we can give them the, as their protections. And we also can give them more resources with the Texas Film Commission. So it's more of a suggestion, we highly encourage it. But especially if you need a street closure or if you need a city building, a city park, those do need specifically film permits. If not, you cannot film in those circumstances.
Cool. Move to approve O2.
Second.
A motion by Warren, a second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Good job. Mr. Lennon, O3.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This is a request that the city council consider adopting an ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter 18, relating to a rate increase for tire disposal from $3 to $5 per tire and a rate increase for appliances from $10 to $20. This request is being made to reflect the current rates being charged by the city of Tyler and Solid Waste Department. So we just want to make sure we're on the same page. So at this time, it's recommended that the city council adopt the ordinance amending City Code, Chapter 18, by amending
Any questions? Mr. Lennon?
I do have one. So the increased fees that the ordinance is approved, where would that money go?
I'm sorry? What was that?
The increased fees that, should this be approved, where would that money go? What would it be used for?
It would, when we send out a bill for someone to pay, and they pay it, then eventually it goes into the general fund.
Sounds like some park funding there, Mr. City Manager.
I don't think there is going to be as much to think, but that's fine.
All cash receipts that the code enforcement department receives goes directly into the general fund, whereas I believe solid waste goes into their funds.
How many are you receiving right now?
How many tires are you receiving? Very minimal. We do pick up quite a few through illegal dumping, but there's no one to charge on those. So we pick those up, and we are now tracking those. With solid waste, we set up a form of how many are actually being dropped off by us. And it's my understanding, with the equipment that they have, they're quartering it, so they're not having to pay the actual total $5 amount to have it hauled off by someone.
So none of the tire companies in Tyler bring tires to you?
No, they do not.
Okay.
So what do you do with the tires?
The tires, we bring them to CMF, which is the transfer station for solid waste. And what they do is, or we'll leave them on-site, and then solid waste picks them up. Then they invoice this and submit a bill. Where the rub is right now is, our ordinance says $3. They recently went up to $5 on theirs, so they've actually got to get less when they submit the invoice back to us. And so it doesn't seem right that, because somebody didn't clean up their property, and then we pick up their tires and we submit an invoice to them, that they actually get a cut, a break of $2. So that's why this request is here.
So no revenue parks?
Yeah.
There are your park money.
It's not significant funds.
Yeah.
Okay, so, well, I would entertain a motion to pass it, though.
Move to approve O3.
A motion by Westbrook, a second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. O4, Mr. Sparrow.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
O4 is the request that city council consider adoption of an ordinance amending and updating Tyler City Code, Chapter 16, related to solid waste disposal regulations. And due to recent increases by the material recovery facility, the monthly subscription fee for curbside recycling, it was 535, and we're wanting to increase it to 596. And this fee change will cover the increased tipping fee of $65 per ton for single-stream recycling. These changes are outlined in the attached ordinance and based off of guidelines in Chapter 16, Solid Waste Disposal Regulations. When we opened bids in January of 2020, Rivers was the only bid received, and their price was $65 a ton. And we found that to be reasonable and responsive with market prices. And of course, the main reason it was increasing is just due to the value decrease in recycled materials. The bid of $65 would be good for one year with five additional one-year terms that we can agree to. Rivers will accept single-stream recycling from city of Tyler that include aluminum, plastics 1 through 7, tin, cardboard, newspaper, magazines, office paper, brown paper, and food cartons. Staff will prepare letters for all recycled customers and notify them of this change. And the new rate of 596 would go out in the April billing cycle. And with that said, it's recommended that city council adopt the attached ordinance amending and update in Chapter 16, related to solid waste disposal regulations.
You know, Larry, we dealt with that at the last meeting, the increase on the contract. The one thing that I would request, and I do recycle, and it's valuable to me, so I will pay that increased fee. But what I do want to respect, that if that rate goes down in the future, let's make sure we pass on that savings to the customers as well, right? If the market does change, let's get it, let's hopefully revisit that and lower the cost in the future.
Okay.
But the cost was $25 a ton, right? It's gone from 25 to 65. That's really not much of an increase to the customer.
No, it was 60, I think it was like 61 cents.
61 cent increase on that one. And Mayor, yes, definitely, we do try to tie it back to what is the cost of the service.
Right.
So that is something that definitely, if you have a better, better contract in the future, that'll be reflected to the...
Yeah, hopefully, it'll, you know, the market will change, hopefully. But when it does, let's make sure we also lower.
Okay. With that, I make a motion to approve O4.
How about that?
Yeah, that's good. A motion by me, a second by Warren. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
He's getting brave in these last minutes.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This is a request to authorize a construction contract with Missouri Petroleum LLC for the 2020 seal, or the Onyx Seal Coat Project. This, again, is a similar process to the normal seal coat, but this is a slightly different formulation for the material that's laid down, so it results in a smoother surface, and therefore, this tends to get used on the residential streets throughout town. We will be coming back later in the future with another contract for that regular seal coat contract. But again, this is for the Onyx Seal with Missouri Petroleum in the amount of $333,000, $33,205.65.
So this product is a thinner product? It doesn't have the...
It has a smaller rock size in it.
Right, good. Well, that's really smart. I'm glad y'all are doing that on the residential streets.
So is this like overlay, like we did on Holly Tree Drive? We talk about seal coating.
Right. Overlay is more of an actual construction process where they take up the existing asphalt and then lay down a completely new layer of asphalt. This is just a sealant material. It's a very thin layer of asphalt and rock material that gets laid down over the top of the existing asphalt.
So not what Holly Tree had, was it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we've listened to the citizens, that when we put thicker rock in the residential streets, it's caused some issues for them.
Yeah, it was, you used to call that chip seal. I kind of think of it that way.
It was a little thicker, thicker rock. So this thinner product is a great idea.
Right.
So, thank you for that.
Move to approve M1.
Motion by Westbrook.
Second.
Second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Hello, again, Mayor and Council. In the consent decree, in compliance requirements under the C-MOM program, there are 11 compliance items the city of Tyler is required to meet. On page 30 of the consent decree, the city of Tyler is required to develop a fats, oils, and grease program, either independently or in conjunction with the existing fog monitoring program of net health, which would minimize the discharge of fats, oils, and grease. On February 13th, 2018, you adopted an ordinance establishing a fog control program as outlined in the consent decree. And today, Tyler Water Utilities will share a year in review of the adopted ordinance. Mr. Norris, manager of Wastewater Utility Systems, and his staff will be giving you that presentation.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Good to see you. Right here at lunchtime, we're going to talk about fats, oils, and greases, so that's a good thing. As Dr. Johnson said, February of 2019, we, you passed a fog ordinance, and it was one of the requirements of the consent decree, as he mentioned. And it's really the first time that the city, for the first time, for the city to have regulations governing the discharges of fats, oils, and greases into our sanitary sewer system. Also, that same time, the same month last year, we updated our waste hauler ordinance. The waste hauler ordinance and the fog ordinance work hand-in-hand. We actually, each liquid waste hauler has to be permitted to haul septic tank waste and the fats, oil, and grease waste from our food establishments, and also our grit trap waste. TCUQ also requires each hauler to have a state permit. As far as staffing goes for our fog program, we have two full-time staff members. These are positions that were not added to the city of Tyler. They are already established. They, their everyday responsibilities include the operating, running the fats, oils, and grease program, the waste hauler program, and also our industrial pretreatment program. I'd like to take just a minute and introduce each one of them to you. Aaron Oakes has four-and-a-half years with the city, and he concentrates mainly on the fats, oils, and grease program. He does our inspections, any sampling that we do, and he works a lot hand-in-hand with the haulers. Sarah Elkins has been with the city for over five years. She just transferred into the fats, oil, and grease program, the pretreatment program, in November. She has been at the Westside Treatment Plant as the lab analyst. So very proud to have both of them, and they're doing a great job. Let's see, we have, don't forget to go to my next slide. We have over 600 grease trap and grit trap in the city, and these are made up of 569 food service establishments. And that not only includes restaurants, that's your churches, your nursing homes, your catering businesses, any place that food is prepared, that is for a commercial-type business. We have 57 grit traps, and those are car washes. It's the best example of a grit trap. Each car wash is required to have the capacity to catch grit, to keep it out of the sanitary sewer system. So we have over 600, which is quite a large number. We use project docs that Development Services uses. When we have new customers coming into Tyler, we have construction for redos or upgrades to the system. Everything goes through project docs, and we review those documents. We review... And we review those plans, and we can reply back to the customer with our requirements in the fog program, and it's working real well. Just wanted to throw out a few numbers for, so the fog program is to help eliminate SSOs, sanitary sewer overflows that are caused by grease. So I wanted to just throw up the last couple of years, very similar in numbers. We had, in 2018, we had 98 SSOs, 30 of those were caused by grease, and in 2019, we had 102 SSOs and 30 caused by grease. So almost identical years. Year-to-date, we've had 12 SSOs, three only caused by grease. So I think if we trend this out, we hope to see by the end of this year a down, a reduction in those, both SSOs and those SSOs caused by grease. We're going to start looking at where these grease-related SSOs happen in the city. We're going to map them. We're going to look at pump-out records for maybe the facilities that are associated with some of these stoppages. We're going to work with them, educate them on the need to pump out and the ordinance. Also, we're very excited about, we have a brand-new software. It's called Linko Fog Software. We just finished the training on that earlier this week, so we're very excited to get that up and rolling. And in fact, Sarah and Aaron have done a lot of work in that already, and we're very excited about that. It is going to help us in the process of locating and mapping, keeping track of all the records for these over 600 customers. We also are very excited about, for our waste haulers, part of this software is cloud-based, so the waste haulers will have an app that they can put on their phone, and when they go up to a restaurant, food establishment, grit trap to pump it out, they will be able to log into our software on the cloud and fill out their manifest right there. And when they hit submit, it is automatically entered into our database. We don't have to do that work. We will get a paper copy of that and verify, but we do not have to take the time to enter all of that information. It will already be there, and it's a very simple process. So we'll be rolling that out this year for our waste haulers to use, and we're very excited about that. Our main goal is to work with our customers. We want to get the word out. We want to educate this year. We want to train, if needed, our customers, and just basically let them know why we're doing this, how the importance it is to the City of Tyler and the residents, and to them to eliminate those sewer stoppages. Anytime they have a sewer stoppage that might back up into their facility, well, the Health Department's going to get involved, and we don't want that to happen. So we're going to help educate them and work with them. We don't want to be that regulatory burden. We want to, I guess I, work with each customer, and we want to also educate the public. So this year, you're going to see some things in mailouts, in water bills. You're going to see us set maybe some education opportunities, schools, and so we're going to just continue to get the word out, because our overall goal is to protect our sewer system and reduce the cost of maintenance there. Any questions?
So are there problem customers, or is everybody pretty compliant?
Everybody has been very compliant. We had, example, one about two weeks ago that we visited because we had seen some problems in the area, visited with the owner, the customer, explained why, and showed them the grease trap and why we need to have it pumped out, and no problems. We're happy to comply. So it's been very smooth so far.
Well, it's the way that you actually approach the customers as well, and so I know you do very well at that, and so I appreciate that. Because we are, we want all the businesses to be very successful, and we want to be a support team to help them. And so I appreciate your attitude very much.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that said, do we need to approve that we got that report?
Move to approve M. 2.
A motion by Westbrook, a second by McGee, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Hello, Davis. Mr. Dixon, excuse me.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Davis Dixon. I reside at 700 Skyway Boulevard.
Yeah.
No, what I'm bringing to you today is a request to consider authorizing the city manager to execute a new commercial airline permit with American Airlines. We, it took some time to negotiate this with them, but we finally have a permit, a signed permit from them in hand, and kind of give you some details. It's about a two-year initial term for this lease or permit. It does reflect the new rates that were adopted for this fiscal year, the landing fees being 75 cents per thousand. That increased 10 cents from years past. And the common space fee is 35 cents per, in plane, or every passenger that boards an aircraft. So it kind of works out well with, when you have multiple airlines, depending on how much they use it, it varies depending on the usage. The rent is $3,750 a month. They rent about 1,524 square feet of queuing space and office space, and we charge a rate of $29.52 for that per square foot per year. The lease does also include two, two-year renewals, but those rates can be negotiated and is contained within the lease that if the council does increase the rates during the term of this permit or the lease, that with a notice, we can increase those rates. The airport advisory board did consider this item, and they unanimously recommend approval for it.
Any questions of Davis?
This is different from the airlines that we already have with American?
No, what it was, their previous lease expired in September, and we actually submitted to them in the summer last year. Took some time to get that through their system, and so we're bringing it today. It retro's back to January 1st. It's just through American Airlines, and they may have different contractors that actually provide the aircraft to our market, but it covers them all.
Are the implements still holding for them?
I think, you know, during this time of year, they fall off a little bit, and usually about April 15th, they really go up. But they've had, in fact, brought in a little bit larger aircraft on a couple, like that first morning departure, which is always very heavy, and it seems to be doing pretty well.
Any talks of a flight to Houston?
You know, I have an opportunity that, researching now, that maybe next month, there's a kind of a conference where all the airlines are going to gather there in Dallas-Fort Worth area, which would include United, United, SkyWest, Delta, several airlines, American. And hopefully, we can have that opportunity to be there to visit with them, because, you know, we get a lot of feedback that Houston's a real desirable market, and from those connections out of Houston, like to the West Coast, are really good. So we really want to get our name out there in front of.
Okay.
Move to approve M. 3, second.
Motion by Sellers, second by McKeller, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Trumbull?
Mayor.
May I just say that I liked your revised numbers?
Mayor, Council, you have item M. 4 before you. You have a request the City Council consider reviewing and accepting the revenue expenditure report for the period ended December 31, 2019, our first quarter. This report that you have compares year-to-date actuals to the same period last year, and also compares our projected forecast to our budget. So we'll just kind of go through and hit a highlight, some highlights on some of the major funds. By no means are these all the funds, but these are just the funds that we kind of focus So we'll start out with the general fund. Revenues are expected to be roughly $946,000 greater than budget, and that is due largely to sales tax. Expenditures are expected to be $1.9 million less than budget, and that is largely due to vacant positions throughout the city, particularly in engineering streets and traffic. So we'll move on to water utilities. Revenues are expected to be roughly $137,000 greater than budget. Of course, I will caution, this is very early in the year. The summer months are really, really impact our revenue, so we'll monitor that as we go throughout the year. Expenditures are expected to be about $1.4 million less than budget. There's some vacancies in power and light savings. However, I caution you all on the power and light savings, it just depends on the volume and what we have to produce in the upcoming months, so that could change some. Solid waste revenues are about $640,000 greater than budget. That is due to commercial and roll-off revenues coming in higher than expected. Particularly, the greatest portion of that is our roll-off activity. As you've noticed, there's a lot of construction around town, so as our economy does good and we see construction, it correlates to this revenue as well. Expenditures are expected to be roughly $241,000 greater than budget, and as I mentioned in my last quarterly report, you all, maintenance of our vehicles is an issue in this department. We're still waiting on some new trucks to come in, but we're expecting our revenues to exceed the overage on our expenditures, but we'll continue to monitor that as well. Airport revenues are expected to be about $185,000 less than budget due to our parking revenue, largely due to parking revenue. Expenses are expected to be $234,000 less than budget, and what we did there to offset our expectation in coming in under budget on revenues, there were some supplemental items that we approved during the budget, some furniture for the terminal, and some AC units that we were planning on replacing. So we're just delaying those. Of course, if the AC units fail, we're going to have to replace those, but we're just delaying on that to make sure that we're covering our revenues.
So what's the main source of revenue at the airport?
Parking lot revenue. Okay, we ready, we'll move on to development services. Revenues are expected to be about $145,000 less than budget. Expenditures are expected to be roughly $30,000 less than budget.
You're slipping.
Sorry. Okay. All right, we'll move on to hot fund, hotel occupancy tax. Revenues are expected to be about $33,000 greater than budget. Expenditures are expected to be about $245,000 less than budget. Also, just a special note, particularly for Councilman Sellers, we're expecting the health fund to end the year with at least a $5 million fund balance.
Thank you, Senator.
And that concludes my report. I just ask that you all accept and review the report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Trumbull. Any other questions? I entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve M. 4.
Motion by Warren, a second by McKeller, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have, ayes have it. Forward. See, you knew I was going to ask you to come up front, see, mother, just come straight on.
She's getting good at this.
Just wait to the last meeting.
If you'll be nice to me, this is my first time presenting.
Just wait to the last meeting.
Can you state your name and address for the reference?
Sandra Braeger, 212 North Farnor Avenue. Very good. This morning, I'm coming to you requesting that the City Council consider appointing or reappointing members to the Disabilities Issues Review Board, Industrial Development Corporation Board, Sales Tax Board, and the Tyler Public Library Board. You should have received in your packet the applications that I received for each board, so we'll just go through and do each one, and you can reappoint and appoint members to the board. So our first board is the Disabilities Issues Review Board. We have four positions open. We received two applications. Juanita Fletcher would like to be reappointed, and Kara Sharman is an appointment, if that is your wish.
I entertain a motion to...
Approve.
Yeah, a motion by McGee.
Second.
Second by Westbrook, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. So Ms. Fletcher and Ms. Sharman are approved.
Okay, we have the Industrial Development Corporation Board. We have four positions open, and we have three applications received. We have Claude Henry and Joanne Hampton to be reappointed, and Miranda George to be appointed.
Do I...
To approve is presented.
A motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. To approve Henry Hampton and George, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Okay, the Library Board, we have two positions open, and we have Cynthia Bennett and Faith McElvy that is a part of this board.
Move to approve Cynthia Bennett and Faith McElvy.
Second. Motion by Sellers, a second by Warren, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
And we have the Sales Tax Board, and we'll bring that back to you at our next meeting.
So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this time, we have the consent agenda. Are there any items which to be pulled, or...
Move to approve the consent agenda is presented.
Motion by Westbrook, a second by McGee, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. City managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Couple of items of note, at your next council meeting, the one on March 25th, we'll be missing the first meeting in March, but we'll be having a council meeting on March 25th. We'll be bringing, as far as, for you, for feedback, as far as the latest status of the Rose Center new conference center design and the kind of the property around it. And so with that, Fitzpatrick Architects has been working with Councilman McGee and getting different feedback from other people in the community, especially as we start to look at some of the operational aspects of the new conference center. And so they'll be bringing their latest design for the conference center, as well as the full layout of the Rose Center Phase 1 for you to kind of review and present, to also make any comments through. We also have a couple of different events coming on. One, we just had for Arbor Day with UT Tyler, in partnership with the Tyler Trees Committee, they had an Arbor Day Celebration Tree Planting on February 15th over on the UT Tyler campus, with over 300 students registered and showed up to volunteer on that cold morning. The university celebrated being recognized as Tree Campus USA for three years in a row now, and the volunteers planted 50 new trees on that campus. We also have coming up this Saturday, the Tyler Trees Committee is hosting a seedling giveaway at Christus Mother, Trinity Mother Frances Hospital, South Tyler. So this will be the South Broadway location, where they'll be giving over 3,700 seedlings away to the public during this event. You will be getting an invitation, or being reached out to by our city's IT department. One of the things they require from the 2019 legislative session is that all elected officials must go through cybersecurity training and get a certification with that. And so that's, the requirement's by May 1st, Mayor, so you still will have to, we'll put you through it.
I'd actually enjoy that. I think that'd be very interesting, by the way.
Jenny tells me you can kind of sleep through it and then just answer after.
No, no, no. I never, I can't sleep anyway.
You can just run the video, he tells me. I don't know, I still got to do it myself. But we'll have them, be able to kind of, IT department, help walk y'all through that, have them kind of set up a spot for y'all to do it, or do it at your home or business, however you so choose. And then finally, I want to thank everyone who participated, especially Councilman McGee for leading it, for the music for the... for the Music for the Soul Black History Month celebration that we had at Liberty Hall on Monday night. From the invocation by Councilman McKeller to just the program and the singing, it was just an incredible dynamic event. And so we thank everyone from the staff and council and the community that was involved in that.
You have something to say?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to make one comment before we go to executive session. This will be my last meeting to be on council. I've got to resign in order to run for mayor. So I hate just to disappear and y'all not see me up here for the next couple of months, but I'm sure you'll see me in the audience, and I'll probably echo these guys up here. But I've got to tell you, the last six years have been phenomenal. The staff has been great. I think we've accomplished a lot. The council people up here have been fantastic to work with. And, you know, the mayor, the leadership I've gotten from him and the mentorship I've gotten from him. We've had some bumps in the road, and they were bumpy. But they were a learning process that I realized I needed to learn what it was he was teaching me. So, thank you for that. I'll see you guys in a couple of months, I hope.
Don, you have, I didn't know you were going to make that comment, but I will say that you have worked very hard as a councilperson to learn and really participate and accentuate what we do as a community. And you have been an excellent city councilman, and I appreciate your service. You know, most people know this, especially in the crowd with mainly employees at this point. But we all serve free, and we give over our time to the community. And, Don, you have spent a huge amount of hours volunteering in all sorts of different facets of this community and this council. So I want to thank you for everything you've done for this community and for this council. And it's been a very, it's been my pleasure to be able to serve with you.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely. At this time, we will recess for executive session. The city council may go into executive session regarding an item posted on the agenda as authorized by Title V, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Notice is hereby given that the city council may go into executive session in accordance with the following provision of the government code. E1, Executive Item Number 1, under Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, Personnel Matters. Deliberation regarding the following: The employment duties and evaluation of the city manager. E2, Executive Item Number 2, under Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, Real Estate Deliberation Regarding the Following: Discuss the purchase, exchange, sale, lease, or value of real property, the public discussion of which would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the city. So at this time, we will recess for executive session, and we, I don't know what time we'll return, but we will return. So right now, we are in recess. At this time, we're reconvening our city council meeting for February 26, 2020. We had, it is now 12:45, so I believe we had an hour, hour and 15 minutes on the executive session. Coming out of this executive session, we do have an item that we would like to work on, and it is the city manager. The city manager came to us in 2015, and when we hired Mr. Broussard, we hired Mr. Broussard at a below-market rate at the time because, really, as a test to see if he would be as effective as we thought he would be, and he wanted to be in this community. And I can say with a resounding yes that Mr. Broussard has performed in this community since 2015 at an incredible high level. One comment from the session was, executive session, is that he is so conscientious, and he not only works very well with each and every councilmember and staff collectively, but your interactions with our public shows that you have a genuine concern to people that live in this community. And that's what's important to all of us, because we represent the community collectively. And when you are in public, you're always respectful, and you always listen to their comments, and each person is of value to you like they are of value to us. Because it's the greatest community on earth, okay? So, we got into budget issues in 2016 and 2017, and during those periods, you acted extremely responsible. In fact, what we requested, I personally requested of you, to take a pay raise. And you turned to me and said, "No, I will not take a pay raise during hard economic times for the rest of our employment force." But what I worried about is where we are today, okay? Because you did not take that compensation, and that we hired you below-market at the time, is that we would reach a day where we've reached. And really, it was, I wrote a note from Kedrick Trimble when he made his budget presentation today. And this is something that, I must say, during all the economic circumstances that we had, I don't feel like I adequately helped lead the organization on what I'm about to say, okay? Is, he said that we are 1.9 million below expenses for the city, while the income is going to be greater 950,000, okay? And then his comment was very telling today. That's because we have open vacancies in our employment. And that, those areas are engineering, streets, and traffic. He specifically said that today. And so what I worry with is we have, really, the lowest number of employees for any city or size in the city of Texas. And that's why we're able to keep such a low tax rate, or one of the reasons. But at the point that we had difficulty hiring a traffic engineer because what our offering was too low, and now we've raised that and we have a very qualified traffic engineer. What I am concerned with, because we were so worried in the budget years, that we are not effectively paying some of the professionals or offering enough to attract the quality of engineer, for example, that we need. So we, I think the next mayor is, since we are having good economic times, is really going to have to grapple with that and really make sure that we are, especially since we have such low employment, that we're getting close to full employment. And then another number in the organization causes me concern is we, our retention level is not what it should be. Really, mid-level, upper levels is not what it needs to be. And so, with that said, we went out during this process and did a very detailed study of what city managers are making in truly comparable cities. We didn't want to go to the large cities and make the, to come up with some sort of trend, and we didn't want to go to the small cities. So we have looked at cities comparable to us, and there are, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 9 cities in the state that are similar. And so that has helped us build a, what we should have been doing during the whole process. And if you would have taken the pay raises that I requested you to take, we would be close to the number of what the average for the 2020 numbers are for these cities, which is 235. But you said no. But we know the, if we're going to ask you to lead an organization where we really need to do, and I know you're in the process of some of this, to do some salary surveys, then you're the first to have that salary survey. And you are of great value to this organization, and I should have made you take the pay raises so it could be more incremental. But today, you're going to take a pay raise. Okay?
Yes, sir.
And with that said, I want, and we'll make sure that all this data is available to the public to fully understand. But it is definitely within the comparable for cities our size. And I know for a fact that you are a very marketable city manager candidate for even cities to the next level above the city of Tyler. So when we ask you to take this pay raise, and you get this pay raise, my request is, don't do it. Stay with us, because you're of value to us as a community. Don't go anywhere, okay? So this is, I'm about to leave, right?
Yeah, I heard things about to get good.
But, I mean...
What'd you say? I said, I heard things about to get good.
Yeah, but, I mean, I think this is, this is very... Look, but this, I'm very serious. This is very important for our community to get this right. If we have a city manager that's functioning at a high level, we need to compensate you equal to what every other city in comparable to us is paying. Because I'm, I, we do not want you to leave. I'll let these councilperson to say what they want, but I don't want you to leave because you're of value to this community, okay? So, that's really the comments that I wanted to make. So would you all like to make any more comments? Or do you want, okay, so do I need to state all this stuff? Okay, let me, let me state all this stuff. Okay, so I'm just going to make a motion, again, since I made one before, okay? I move that the city manager employment agreement be amended only as follows. A salary of $235,000, which is absolutely deserved and equal to the comparable cities. And that would be effective for January 1, 2020. So effectively, in this fiscal year, it's 226. However, the contract submitted to be 235. Auto allowance at $10,000, below what you're doing now a little bit, to put it in comparable with the other cities. The health premium contribution, the city pays for their family, medical, dental, and vision. Deferred compensation, one time, $19,500. And TMRS contribution, city reimburses TMRS EE contribution at 7%. Okay? So that puts you absolutely similar to these comparable cities. And with your, well, we'll have a vote, and everybody will say what they want and vote the way they want. But I want to make sure that you stay in this community. And so, once they take a vote, and if they agree with me, then I'm going to also ask you not to leave.
Has to be done in blood.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Because it's, we're doing so well as a community, and you have been incredible. So, anyway, I'll open it up to other comments.
I have a comment. First, I want to say, Mr. City Manager, that you have been an amazing mentor for me. I love sitting next to you because if there's crazy things that I don't want to say openly so that no one will criticize, just teasing, but you always provide the answers for me. You've been a great leader for me and helped me to transition into city council, and I really appreciate that. So the growth and development that I have seen from you has been amazing. And you also showed me that, that there's been more done for North Tyler than I really knew. So I appreciate that, and I'm so happy that you're going to stay with us. Thank you, sir.
You know, Ed, I was on the council when we hired you, and we saw a broad variety of people, applicants. And so, you were, to me, and I think that everybody else that was on that council, you were the right choice and the care choice. And I've never looked back thinking we should have done anything different. And so, with all that being said, as the years have gone by and we meet once a month and visit, the conversations, a lot of times sway away from the city, and we end up just kind of shooting debris, sometimes just shooting debris. And I think it's important not only to have the professional relationship, but also have the personal relationship. And you bring that to all of us, but I think you bring it to the community where people see the real Ed. So, I would like to hear you say, "I'm not going anywhere."
Okay, I wasn't before, but yes, I'm not, I'm going.
Thank you.
Well, I got to meet you during the interview process and was impressed because we did see a wide array of candidates. But where I got to know you was when you visited my Rotary Club, which is now our Rotary Club. And you exhibited a service-above-self culture, or it was just revealed, it's not what you exhibited, it's truly what you've revealed through the time that we've served in Rotary, but also what you do every day here in this, within this wonderful organization. And so, it's an honor to work with you, and, but that culture is not just a service culture at Rotary, it's truly a culture that you exhibit every day of your life. Thank you, thank you for that.
We're skipping him because he said too much to begin with. You know, Ed, I've told you since the day you came here that I was so impressed, even from the interview portion, of how well you intermingled with our constituents, our clients, and the people we have to please every day. And in all these years, I've not heard one negative thing because you're so kind to them, and even when they're asking for things that you can't accomplish for reasons unknown, you're, I mean, you still have them walk away thinking that you positively were going to do that. So, you know, that takes a real skill and a real personality to be able to do that, and I don't think we could find anybody else that could be that way. The other thing that impresses me is how you make notes constantly, and you never forget anything. I sometimes think that I say things in passing, and I'll get back to my office, and he's already done it and sent me an email, and so it's like, he addresses all of our issues, and we could do it without you, and I think Don would kill us all if you left. And we like Sammy, too, so.
Exactly.
Well, I can't but help but echo all the sentiments of the other council members, but you know how, you know, we're right here. And I really appreciate your support and your willingness to take on those tasks that no one else wants to handle. And so I know that sometimes it gets a little difficult and challenging, but thank you for that. I was not here when they hired you and during the interview process, but as a human resource professional, I know how hard it is when you're trying to find the right person for the... the job. So, just don't leave, because I don't have to interview anybody else.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. He did the motion.
I'll second him. I'll second the motion. And third?
No, no, I was just...
Are you gonna talk tomorrow?
Second, third?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk more, but, so we have a motion and a second.
And a third, and a fourth.
And a fourth, and a fifth.
Yes, everybody's seconds and thirds.
We're so tired, we're getting silly.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And, Ed, thank you very much. I will say that I look forward to, I won't be mayor, but there'll be many times that we'll get to visit, and I'll be able to watch the success of this council and the success of the city, and you'll be a big part of that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna say one or a couple things, not too much, though. I know all y'all are working from a sugar high and from the cake. I tell our new employees this all the time, and I sincerely mean it, everybody thinks their community is better. But Tyler actually, actually is. The citizens of Tyler respect the services that the city provides, and it's been such a remarkable thing, and I've seen this through, I mean, it is throughout Tyler. You know, a lot of places you'll go, and they'll just say, "Oh, the city," you know, "the city doesn't do this right, the city doesn't do that right." The people of Tyler love you, they love the services that the city provides, and they love our employees. And that is such a special thing, and it is a joy and an honor, and I am privileged to be your city manager and to be able to work for you, to be able to help with that. Bishop Houston on Sunday during the church service talked about the fact, "The cost of service is the price we pay for the opportunity to be here." And that just, that was, that, him stating that, that is so true, and it's something our employees, we want to make sure that they reflect, it's something I see from you as mayor and council, that y'all reflect, and it just is something that I'm glad to be here to help, to be one little small piece of this, of this community, to help making sure that we are all doing what we can for the service in order to continue this greatness of the city. So, thank y'all for, just the honor to be able to work with you.
Thanks. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
In favor, aye.
We are adjourned.